Come on.
Call order, clerk?
Councilmember, Agency Director, Ma'am?
Present.
Marcus?
Here.
Silvio? Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman, Smith?
Here.
Mayor-Chairman, Paris?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please do the invocation.
Henry Hearns.
Mr. Mayor, and to the council, I brought my daughter with me, and if she could have about thirty seconds to say thank you for what you all did for my ex-wife, her mother, and joining the meeting tonight. Could she do that right now?
Good evening to you all. I just, as my father stated, I would really like to extend sincere thanks and appreciation to you all for helping us to celebrate the wonderful life of my mother, Essie Hearns, who was an educator here for over thirty years, and lived a great life, touched many lives, and I thank you all for helping her memory to be sustained, I guess you could say. And thank you, God bless you, and thanks.
Thank you, baby. There's a pledge that we do at our church to the Lord, and it goes in Psalms 34, and it says, "I will bless the Lord at all times; his praise shall continually be among mine. My soul shall make a boast in the Lord, and the humblest shall hear thereof, and be glad. Oh, magnify the Lord with me, and let us exalt his name together." Father, we thank you for this wonderful opportunity to be here in the city of Lancaster with our mayor and all the council, and all of the staff, who come together to make a team in critical, in downturns, in our economy, in wars going on, and all kinds of things. And so they need your wisdom, and they need your guidance, they need your protection, and we pray for that this evening. I particularly pray for our city mayor, and I particularly pray for our city manager, who has to make the head of a team for both the staff and the council. God, we thank you, and we ask your blessing upon them and on our city, that we may walk consistently to please you. And we pray this in the precious name of our Lord and our Savior, even Jesus. Amen. God bless you.
Vice Mayor, Smith?
Face flag of our nation, recognizing principles for which it stands. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the Student Athlete of the Month. Is Kara here?
Come forward.
You look like you're nervous. This is Kara Sherard, is that right?
Yes.
I got it right? Good. She's a senior volleyball star at Quartz Hill High School. She was undefeated in the Golden Lake volleyball season for 2007 and 2008. In 2009, 2007, I'm sorry, Kara was named the top outside hitter in the Golden Lake. What's a hitter?
I guess a hitter's a ball?
You're the one who spikes?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, you're gonna play volleyball, isn't that what you want to be, is the spiker? In 2008, Kara was named the Golden Lake Player of the Year, while again making the first team LCIF squad. Kara was named the most valuable player in the 2008 Hesperia Tournament, and was first team in the 2008 Royal Tournament. Before concentrating on volleyball, Kara was the Defensive Player of the Year in 2007 for the soccer team, for the varsity soccer team, and holds the 440-meter record at Delsaure Middle School. She plays for local travel clubs. That's club volleyball, right? She has a 3.6 GPA. She's attracted interest of UC San Diego, UC Santa Barbara, and Cal Poly Pomona. So which one is it? Santa Barbara's a good place. That's where I went. On behalf of the city of Lancaster, we want to present you with this award, naming you the Senior Athlete of the Month, and tell you how proud we are that you're part of Lancaster. Thank you. Also tonight, we have Josh Wagner. Is he here?
Yes, he's here.
You popped a burglar. Congratulations. This is Josh Wagner. On January 27th, Josh spoke with one of the neighbors. Wait a minute, you were investigating a burglary report. He spoke with one of the neighbors, stated they didn't see anything. It was later discovered that that neighbor had in fact committed the burglary of... It was Josh Wagner's investigation that led the burglary team to the, both the investigation and the arrest, right? Has he been convicted yet?
Uh, I don't think so.
It's coming. You know, the community service officers have had a huge impact on law enforcement in the Animal Valley. Lieutenant Dalton and the captain are over there shaking their head yes, because what they've done is not only have they gone out, they're supposed to just go out and take reports, but what they've really been doing is gone out there and do investigations and end up getting people arrested, which we're getting double-banged for the buck. And of all the programs I think we've been utilizing, this is probably one of the best, and you're a great example of that. Now, this ought to get 'em in the academy, right? Okay. Good. That's all. Got a small agenda tonight. Anything on the agency consent calendar we're gonna pull?
We're gonna pull PH1 to be continued to a date uncertain, Mr. Mayor.
What about...
Also, Mr. Mayor, if I could, just for efficiency, if there's no dissent from the council, could we move the city consent calendar to be done right after the, right after the agency consent calendar? Because I think you're gonna recuse yourself on...
Actually, I'm not.
Consent?
I don't see any reason...
Number 10?
That's Greg Gaines. I don't see any reason to recuse myself.
Okay, that's good.
It's just because of who it was, right?
We talked to him.
Okay. Nothing to be removed, then?
RCC2. RCC2...
Oh, yeah, we recuse yourself on...
That's right, I do have to do that.
Okay, you wanna do the consent calendar first, and then do those?
Yeah, I'll move that we remove RCC2, and I move to adopt the agency consent calendar as currently comprised.
I'll second that.
And it's for four, and Councilman Silvio absent. Moving on to the consent calendar, is there a motion?
Well, you were recusing yourself on RCC2, so...
I thought you wanted to do the consent calendar, then have me recuse myself.
Yeah, if you were gonna recuse yourself on...
Oh, okay.
But you're not, so it's...
So now I gotta recuse myself.
That way we don't make you get up and walk back and forth, back and forth.
Okay. Oh, and I gotta announce why, don't I? I'm recusing myself on item number 10. Item number...
RCC2.
Two? Yeah, two, because that's my wife's project, right?
Right.
And you're my wife's project. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to the Vice Mayor.
Let the record reflect that the mayor has left the room. Do I hear any motions on RCC2?
I move that we accept RCC2 on the consent calendar.
All right, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Call for a vote. It's three, three in favor, and one absent, and one recused. Let the record reflect, the mayor is now back at the, in the chambers, and I've turned the meeting over to him.
Okay, moving on. Public hearing, item number one. Let's open the public hearing, and that's the parking penalty schedule.
Skip. Mark. RMB1.
What are you doing to me?
You're gonna do, yeah, you're gonna do agency, new business, new business...
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's okay.
I'll get this by the time my term's over.
Good evening, Mayor Paris and City Council members. RBF will be doing a presentation on the Trend Neighborhood Master Vision Plan. Staff is requesting that the agency board concur with the vision plan and direct staff to commence with the planning, environmental, and redevelopment processes necessary to implement and complete the Trend Track Master Vision Plan. Susan Harden from RBF will be doing the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm happy tonight to be here to talk to you about this exciting project, the Trend Track Vision Master Plan, that we've been working on for several months now, in concert with the city staff. Just want to briefly go over an introduction to the project, talk about what we've been discovering about the Trend Track neighborhood, a little bit about the background information, and then spend some time on the draft vision plan, as well as talk about some next steps. As you may know, Trend Track was established in the early 70s for the B1 defense contract, so many of the employees that were housed there were part of that project. They were also given loans through the Section 235 program, HUD's fairly dismal loan program, and many of those homeowners defaulted, and things were going into foreclosure, and the B1 contract ended, and the neighborhood started to decline. And that not only resulted in some decline, but also a very large negative stigma or negative image. That negative image persisted, and as such, the neighborhood continued to decline over the years as well. So there's been a resurgence of energy now to try to focus on this neighborhood, and really try to bring it back up to the standard that it was when it was initially developed. Some of the objectives, they range from enhancing the circulation and access, and traffic calming, doing work with housing, stability of the neighborhood, talking about planning and design, contributing to open space and community open space and recreation, ensuring adequate infrastructure, and creating revitalization implementation tools. And these are just kind of some of the, I guess, the nuts and bolts, if you will. But really, what's trying to happen here is to revitalize this neighborhood and make it stronger, and have that energy that it once had. And there are neighborhoods throughout the country that are suffering the same kind of foreclosure crisis again now, that we see everywhere. And many cities are tackling it just as, let's buy some of these foreclosed homes, or let's just do some rehab, and they're doing piecemeal kind of work. Lancaster, however, really is focusing on a lot of different areas to revitalize the neighborhood, not just hinging on the foreclosure purchases, not just hinging on working on some code enforcement, but really doing concerted effort. So ranging from the foreclosure purchase to the rehab that the redevelopment agency is doing, the sheriff's work in the neighborhood, the code enforcement that has been going on, increasing code enforcement in the area, the neighborhood and community building that's been happening with the residents, the city staff's working closely with residents as well, and then this portion that I'm presenting to you tonight, really looking more at the physical part, the urban planning recommendations. All of these are converging together as, to try to create this stronger neighborhood, one that's thriving, that's safe, that's attractive, and that's a family-centered place. And really, Lancaster is doing a tremendous job of bringing all these pieces together, and not just focusing on one aspect. In developing this draft plan, we've done a lot of different things to try to understand the neighborhood better, working closely with city staff, closely with the sheriff's department, not only from a ride, doing some ride-alongs, but also talking with them about where's some of the crime happening, what are some of the details that they can share with us, in terms of how do we implement some of these measures to improve the neighborhood. We've had some informal discussions with residents as we've been out in the neighborhood doing reconnaissance. We're applying good urban design principles, revitalization principles, and Safescape principles, which is kind of a version of crime prevention through environmental design, but also that includes a little bit more on the community side of things. We've also been doing a lot of mapping of data, so looking at some of the, where are some of the whole houses that are being foreclosed, where are some of the houses that are in worst condition, and really looking at how does that all play into some of these different recommendations as well. I want to spend just a few minutes giving you a little bit of a feel of what's happening in the neighborhood, what has been happening in the neighborhood, and I'll go through these fairly quickly, in the interest of time, but just a taste of some of the mapping that we're doing. If you look at the red dots, those show all the dead ends in the neighborhood, all the cul-de-sacs are the dead ends. And in a neighborhood like this, where there's already some trouble, some of these dead ends can cause even more trouble, and that's often where we see some of the worst-conditioned homes often, or even some of the higher crime in those dead-end areas. So we've got this maze, if you see this, of disconnected streets, so there's not a good grid system, which makes it great for criminals, because it's easy for them to maneuver around, but not so great for some of the surveillance that's needed in the neighborhood. There's also just a number, a couple different key entries, but they're not highlighted necessarily as major points of entry. There's opportunities there to really heighten that as an arrival into a special place, a special neighborhood that this could be. There is some lighting and some signage in the neighborhood, opportunities to enhance that as well, and there's the concrete pole, cobra lighting that's there, it does share the lighting and help with lighting in the neighborhood, but not necessarily from the way that could be, so there's opportunities there to improve that. Generally, some of, there's some maintenance issues throughout the neighborhood, streets are in somewhat of disrepair, driveways are even in worse repair, so there's some private property improvements that need to be made, but there's also some on the public side that could really add a lot of value to the neighborhood. There are some areas between the fence line, the sidewalk, that kind of are no man's land, for lack of a better word, that are not taken care of necessarily by the residents, where they possibly should be, but they don't necessarily know that that's supposed to be their property, because it's kind of this gray area, so that's an area that we're working on as well. There's some clutter and debris in the neighborhood, ranging from some of the shopping carts that are left, to trashcans that are left out, inoperable vehicles and motorhomes, some of those that add to a little bit of the negative ambiance in the neighborhood. Along with that goes some of the trash and dumping, those large items, those large pieces of either furniture, mattresses, that sort of thing, that is problematic in the neighborhood as well, so we've been looking at those aspects, as well as we move into recommendations. The age of the housing, this just shows the range of ages, and it's a little bit hard to see with the light, but there's this range of different blues, and all those represent the houses that were built in the early 1970s, or in the 70s. There's an area of newer homes here in the corner that are more in the mid-80s. And we see a range of different improvements that need to be made, based sometimes on the age itself, so we've been looking at how does the age of housing relate to some of the problems in the neighborhood as well. We see that some of the houses in the early 1970s, and those that are in foreclosure, not surprisingly, are some of those that are in need of the most repair, or have the biggest structural issues. We see some of the driveways, again, this is a private property issue, but also related to policy. Many of the driveways are being expanded into the front yard, so we're losing some of that neighborhood character by that large amount of asphalt or concrete that's taking over the front yards of many of the houses, so that's something that we're looking at from a policy standpoint. Fencing is also an issue, there's a lot of territorial-style fencing, and it's a symptom of people necessarily, not necessarily feeling safe in their own area, so there's some fencing that's going on, that's very intimidating in some respects, so that's something that's contributing again to the feeling of fear perhaps for some of the residents in the neighborhood. And of course, from an activity standpoint, we know that there's quite a bit of crime occurring in the neighborhood, there's also some overall activity where you see people in the street in an intimidating fashion, and things of that sort that we're looking at, where those are happening, even basketball, which is a great activity in this neighborhood, sometimes is causing some problems by the location of where they're doing that, and taking over in the streets, and not necessarily letting traffic go by when it needs to. Now, those are some of the negative parts of the neighborhood, and we don't want to start this out on just a negative tone, because there really are some things in the neighborhood that are there to be proud of, and to build on as well, as we look at trying to improve the neighborhood. The residents that we talk to, many of those are very proud of where they live, and they want to stay, and they want to see and help this neighborhood improve, so harnessing that energy is really essential as we move into more improvements. There are sidewalks throughout the neighborhood, that's not the case in all the neighborhoods in Lancaster, so that's a really important piece as well. Some beautiful, mature trees, which is a wonderful thing, a feature to have, especially as we are in this kind of zero-scape mode, where we're not really adding many trees to the neighborhoods. This one has some really great, solid, beautiful trees. Code violations have been decreasing, thanks to the work of the city, so we're seeing some code violations going down, I think, again, a result of the fact that there is resident pride in the neighborhood. And there's a closed grocery store. Again, not every neighborhood has that luxury of having that closed grocery store, so there's some really positive things happening in the neighborhood as well. And we're looking at all this information, working again closely with the city, and applying some good principles, we've developed a draft vision plan. And this is focused again mostly on some of the physical changes, and primarily looking at circulation changes, and also some recreation and amenity changes as well, improvements that could be made. And if you look at the screen, you can kind of see in the light brown color, there's some opportunities for infill, residential infill, and some rehab, that we've targeted some locations specifically where we think the biggest bang could be made for the buck there, in terms of how to get some major impact in the rehab and infill projects. And I'll go into a little bit more detail on a few of these items as well. But just to orient you to the map, the little yellow lines that you see everywhere, those are either, those are new roadways for the most part, looking at trying to connect that grid system. We've got traffic calming measures on many of the major intersections, gateways into the neighborhood, and as well as public space, and I'll go through each of these in a little bit more detail. So looking at these new roadways, as you can see, there's quite a few of them surrounding the neighborhood. And again, that's to create, where I showed you all those dead ends, it's to add a little bit more of that interconnection, so people can move freely through the neighborhood, not setting it up as a throughway, but really creating that, an easier way to circulate through the neighborhood for the residents, but also for security purposes and surveillance, to increase that eyes on the street. We've also added a couple more access points into the neighborhood, allowing, again, to create more of that visibility, and a less of a walled-off feeling for the neighborhood itself, so less hiding places, and that sort of thing as well. Opportunities for traffic calming, as I mentioned, gateways. All of the entries should be treated as a gateway into the neighborhood. We've identified one in particular that really should be highlighted as a key place to celebrate this neighborhood, and have an iconic entry, whether it's a neighborhood marker, or landscaping, or something that signifies we're entering into a special place, not only for people that enter this neighborhood who are not residents, but for residents themselves to feel that sense of pride, and increase that sense of pride. And streetscape enhancements as well, along the major roadways surrounding the neighborhood, even narrowing the street as well. So the goal being to increase that natural surveillance, those eyes on the street that we hear a lot about, sometimes it takes some physical changes to really make that happen. We want to enhance pedestrian safety and security, that's also why the traffic calming is so important, because you want people to be able to, kids included, to walk freely through the neighborhood and feel safe from vehicles, but also feel like they're safe and just being able to be out there in their own neighborhood. And then, of course, improving the neighborhood image and identity, so all of these we think that can contribute to this, all these three goals here. Some of the different types of traffic calming, those blue circles could be a variety of different types of traffic calming measures. We're working closely with your traffic engineer to figure out exactly what those will be in the next phase of the project, we'll be figuring a little bit more detail out. Could be items ranging from neighborhood traffic circles, very small, not intended to be the large roundabouts that we see, with some type of zero-scaping perhaps in the center, not only helping to calm traffic, but also adding to a nicer ambiance in the neighborhood. It could also be something as simple as a bulb-out on the corner, striped crosswalks perhaps around that major open space in the neighborhood. It could be stop signs, traffic controls, it could be T-intersections, a variety of different measures to look at, so we're not saying one size fits all for all those intersections, and we'll be looking at those more closely. Recreation and amenities are two of the other probably key parts of this vision plan. If you look at the black boxes surrounding there, those are the key places in the neighborhood where we've identified opportunities for recreation and amenities. One being, you can barely see this little dashed green line, but that is, would be a Class 1 multi-use trail, that would actually provide additional access to the prime desert woodlands, but also as a recreation opportunity for the residents themselves. And we've also identified a pedestrian connection at the corner of Avenue L and 40th Street that would allow for pedestrians to exit the neighborhood without having to go all the way to either one of the entries, so it allows for, again, more movement through the neighborhood. We're looking at also an opportunity at that, I mentioned that gateway of creating more of an entry statement, again, through landscaping or open space, or perhaps some kind of a plaza, but that could be an opportunity for open space. The large one, being this one in the center, that could be the location of a community park. As you know, park and recreation is really important for neighbor, for it to create a real neighborhood, and in this case, just creating a small pocket park might not do that, so we are looking at actually creating a larger piece of open space that really could contribute, not only just to the neighborhood, but to surrounding neighbors as well, and bringing more of an opportunity for residents to interact, increasing that social capital, and people being able to meet each other and get together, and that sort of thing, so there's an opportunity there to perhaps purchase some properties and create that community park, which would also provide a forum and a location for the basketball, for some of the activities that are currently occurring in the streets, there'd be a location for that. And just some imagery to show you what is kind of envisioned in that park-like setting, as well as that multi-use trail here in the bottom. By also doing some of the improvements at the back of the neighborhood, there's an opportunity to increase the surveillance on the prime desert woodland as well, those roadways that we're opening, as well as the trail, and even one of the dead ends, looking at some improvements there as well, to make sure that the eyes on the street are on the street, but they're also on that natural resource that is so important to this community. So just in closing, again, looking at all that the city is doing, it's so exciting, it's exciting for us to be a part of this, and not just being asked to come in and do our one small piece, and nothing else is happening, and everything's being hinged on the design and the urban design and planning, because it's not enough. All of these things have to be going on together to really make an impact, and Lancaster is doing this, and we're excited to be part of this project, as well as some of the other neighborhood efforts that are going on in the community. as well as some of the other neighborhood efforts that are going on in the city because by doing this, you really are going to be able to make an impact and result in these thriving neighborhoods throughout your city. Quickly on next steps, of course, not all of these items are going to happen quickly. Most of, many of them, in fact, are going to take some time and some, a little bit more development and fine-tuning and refinement. So that's one of the things that we're doing next, is refining the entire vision plan. But then there's also going to be need to look at some of the policies, some potential regulatory plans that may need to occur as well, the environmental clearance. Each of these will have to be broken out into specific projects that'll be brought forth to you as well, so you'll get a chance to view them in a little bit more detail. And of course, there's looking at funding and property acquisition and a lot of different steps that have to go into it. But this is the stepping stone to starting to make that happen and really start to create that energy and new vibrancy in the Trent Track neighborhood. And I'll take some questions, and Elizabeth as well.
Any questions?
My only question was where you've got the park proposed? That's developed properties, right?
Yes.
So are you, like, grabbing one of those houses every time one's emptied or something?
What we're trying to do is take advantage of this economic downtrend and acquire what properties we can at 50, 60, and 70,000 instead of waiting when the market's up and paying a lot more money. And so when they do become available as a foreclosure, we absolutely do pick it up.
And that's the section that you're looking at to do that with?
In addition to the ones that we're going to rehab and then sell to get more of a balance of homeownership versus all rental. So yes, we're working at it. It takes time. But we do take advantage of what we can get. At some point, we'll have to do like we did in the north downtown is actually work at acquiring them. And what we've been successful at in doing that is that we take a long-term thinking of what we're doing and generally, we're very successful at being able to acquire the properties when the people make life-choice decisions that make that property available for us to buy. And that's what these maps really help because the people see the map, they know that we're going to want to acquire it. So then when they have to retire or move or something comes up, where the first person they come to is say, hey, we're in your project, we want to sell. And it just makes it a lot easier than other cities because they struggle with how can you do eminent domain and condemnation and all that. We're very fortunate, we take our time, we work it smart, and we don't have to do that.
So what's your projected timeframe?
Oh, I don't know. A lot of it depends on funding. Some of the projects in here, the funds are limited at this time. For redevelopment, for the foreclosure, the rehabs, I think we'll do very well. Streets, parks, that's very restricted budgeted funding, and right now, there's not a lot of it. But it also gives all of the other staff members in the other departments the opportunity, when funding becomes available, we're able to grab it. So sometimes it may go faster than we anticipate, sometimes slower, just kind of depends.
And as we move into the next phase, where we really start to lay out the detail of those roadways and of these various improvements, we'll be able to see more specifically maybe which ones are going to rise to the higher level of importance and which ones may be easier to implement, which ones may be harder, and that'll help prioritize some of that as well.
This looks great, though.
Anyone else?
Mr. Bozignian, where's the community garden? I just spoke to one of the planning commissioners today about that, who's starting it and looking for locations.
It would seem that this would be a primary area.
You could certainly look at it for that. Looking on the west side.
Look at that?
That'd be an amazing addition to this community space.
Could you make that a priority?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm a little concerned when we don't have deadlines. I mean, it seems to me like we should have some completion deadline, at least where we reach a decision that we have to wait. You know what I mean?
Yes. Well, when we started on the north downtown transit village project, we thought we were going to do that in five years. And we're now at 2010. I can, after you approve the vision plan, after we refine it, then we can sit down and go over what we can do, what kind of funding, and then do a timeline. But this is just the master vision plan that gets your approval for us to go to the next step, to then determine what's going to be the priority or where we're going to have the funding for the different items within that project area.
Mr. Mayor, too, during the budget process, we use these vision plans. This is one neighborhood, we have several. We use it to prioritize road improvements, drainage, et cetera. So it's certainly the prerogative of the council during the budget process to put a priority on neighborhoods if we could.
It sounds a little bit like my college plan, you know? It seemed to drag on forever.
I won't comment on your college plan, but the budget every year is a priority.
Well, we've already, can I say one thing? On the Trent Track, we have started in that we had TOPS, COPS, CORE, high-impact, go into that neighborhood and really make a huge difference in eliminating all of the inoperable vehicles, a lot of the disorderly Section 8 contacts. We eliminated a lot of gang activity. Code enforcement has gone in there and continuously has made vast improvements in the appearance. Right now, we have, I think, eight foreclosed properties that we own that we'll be walking and taking to bid. And then we are taking a lot of the funds that we got from CDVG to buy the foreclosed homes in there. So we're already doing, we are also going door-to-door with the door-knockers to get them to participate in the housing programs for the driveways, exterior paint. Our programs are designed to benefit the whole neighborhood. So we're in there right now and have been doing that. So it's not like we're not doing anything. We are doing it, but there's going to be other things that cost money that is a big budget overall decision, and that has to do with parks and roads and things like that.
And oftentimes, having a plan like this in place where residents who may be a little hesitant to put money into their property, who may not need to take advantage of some of the programs, but who are a little hesitant to do that, when there's a plan like this, they are more eager to actually put some money into their property and make some improvements and invest emotionally and with money into the neighborhood because they know something's happening. So even just the presence of having a plan of action is really important.
Thank you. Have a motion?
Do we need a motion on this, or is this just give staff direction?
To, yes. And the vision plan.
A motion concur? Okay, I'll move that we concur with the plan.
I'll second that.
It's unanimous. Now we can go to the consent calendar, right?
That's correct.
Is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Again, it's unanimous. Okay, let's move on to public hearing item number one, the parking penalty schedule.
That was continued till a date on service.
Mr. Mayor, you need to open the hearing and then continue it.
You want it open and?
Yeah, and that way we don't have to renotice.
Okay. They changed that.
Well, I wish they would change it on mine.
No, it's okay. No, that's a good idea. So just open the public hearing.
Okay, let's open it. And now, we continue it to win or just leave it open?
A date to be determined.
We really have to do this stuff, huh?
Should we close the public hearing?
No.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. We now hear from the finance director, Barbara Boswell. And we're going to hear from Mark instead. Jerry, you usually are so good on my script. What have you done to me? Did I make you angry?
We made a late addition on Jerry with me in here, but I'm going to make some introductory remarks. Barbara's going to give a short presentation, and we'll make some closing remarks. Before we get into it, I wanted to spend a moment of where we've been.
This is on the mid-year budget, right?
Yes, it is, sir.
Okay, thank you.
My friend Mike Metro, Chief Metro, always says the best time to prepare for an earthquake is before the earthquake hits.
How are we doing on that?
What's that?
How are we doing on that?
Earthquake? Very well, actually. Good. Also, so the best time to prepare for an economic downturn is before the economic downturn hits, which is during good times. And I wanted to spend a minute or two talking about, when we say conservative financial practices, I hope to give the council and the public some level of comfort on what that means more than just a phrase. What it means is the examples are that you have a 10% operating reserve that you have each and every year in your budget. You also have a 25% financial stability reserve on top of that, which is three months' worth of expenditures. That is in your budget each year that you adopt at your direction. We also have a very powerful tool, a 10-year financial forecast, which, whether it's good news or bad news, gives us the news ahead of time in time to make some changes or make some plans on how we're going to deal with it. We take a conservative financial approach towards revenues. For example, if a hotel's going up, even if it's under construction, even if it's almost done, we don't count any transit occupancy tax until it's actually open and people are in it. The same thing with any business that's here or any revenues we have. When we see it, we count it. We don't count grants until we actually have the grants. We staff up during high times of development with contract labor as much as possible, and we have tight spending practices and budgeting. Most importantly, I think that the attitude of city staff is that we treat the money like we would treat our own money. But more importantly, before we start Barbara's presentation, most importantly is that the council has really, this council and last council, have been very good at not giving into temptation to spend one-time funds that might be there for ongoing programs. It takes discipline and some courage when you have money there to know what it's for and not tap into it. So we thank you for that. With that, I'll turn it over to Barbara.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a little bit of a cold, so excuse me. I'm going to take just a few minutes to provide an overview of our mid-year budget review. Each year at this time, the council and the redevelopment agency undertake a review of its budget assumptions, particularly in our revenues, in order to make adjustments in response to changes in economic conditions. We've all heard the daily reports of the current condition of the economy. It's all been bad news. I have for you what I say is a bad news and good news report. I like to end on an up note, so I'm going to start with the bad news and end with the good news. The bad news. Unemployment, unemployment has just been skyrocketing. In Lancaster, it's up to 13%, and it seems to keep going up. Auto sales, which historically has been our number-one sales tax generator, has been down for eight consecutive quarters. This last quarter has been the worst quarter of those two years. The housing market continues this downward spiral, which impacts the city's property tax revenues. On a national level, the credit crunch is impacting business as well as personal purchasing power. These economic indicators are impacting Lancaster's revenue streams. We're experiencing decreases beyond what had been projected when the budget was originally developed. Now, the good news. We are reaping the benefits of our conservative fiscal policies, some of which were mentioned by the city manager. These policies have resulted in the city maintaining reserves that are available to carry us through the downturn if needed. Our goal, of course, is to not tap into those reserves and be able to maintain them, but we know they're there if we need them. Over the past several years, we've used long-term financial planning to provide an early warning system to proactively plan for future trends. And the city continues to be proactive in its approach to the current economy. A great example is the economic stimulus package, which is being brought forward to you tonight. These efforts all work hand-in-hand. The story could very well easily be different if one of these bubbles was missing. Now, I'd like to provide the boring stuff, just a quick overview of the financial picture. Net total revenues are being adjusted upward by $6,200, but that's really being skewed by the change in our tax increment revenues in redevelopment agency, which is just over 2.9 million. When we pull that out, our city revenues are actually going down by 3.2 million. Overall expenditures are being recommended to decrease by over 15 million. The majority of these reductions are deferrals of capital projects and also closeouts where we have some savings left over. Focusing on the general fund, which is really our checking account where we pay for our COPS and our parks programs and the things that are, most of the services that our citizens enjoy, revenues are down $5 million. We've been able to identify over $5.7 million in reductions as well as adjusting our transfers between our funds of $500,000. What that means is at the end of the year, if now our current estimates are accurate, we'd be adding over $1,200,000 to our savings account. But I don't really recommend at this time that we look for ways to spend that money because that's really our wiggle room in case our current estimates are wrong and things decline even further. So where did the reductions come from? We've identified projects that can be deferred into the future without significantly impacting operations. We've kept positions vacant as employees have left the city. And we've optimized the use of restricted funds in order to save on the general fund side. And last but not least, we have an economic stimulus package, which has been developed to provide assistance to our local businesses and residents. I would like to mention that I provided to each of you a revised adjusted summary sheet. The revision, the difference between that and the original sheet is we deleted the revenue identified as neighborhood stabilization program. Between the time that I was working on mid-year and tonight, we actually brought an item to council that approved the funding of the neighborhood stabilization program, and this would have been a duplicate of that same money. So it's appropriate to remove that from the proposed adjustment. This does conclude my short, sweet presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Just comments.
Any comments?
Yes, you know, I'd like to say, like I said before, that I'm excited about this mid-year budget adjustment. I mean, there's a lot of cities that are having a lot of problems and some of them getting close to bankruptcy. And our city seems to be very stable. And it has to go, the credit to the hard-working staff, I mean, all the way down to the, I mean, just everybody. I mean, look at, and I think they're looking and counting how many paperclips they're using to cut in. And some of the, some of the things that they've done that you didn't mention here is like those 20 positions that are opened and they're being, you know, employees are being moved around, their jobs are being moved around, so they're not general-funded jobs, but restricted-funded jobs. And so just a big congratulations to you and every single person that works at this city that has just really looked and tightened their, tightened the belt buckle and just done a great job. Just very proud of everybody.
It's definitely a team effort. Thank you. I would actually like to turn it over to the city manager. He does have some closing remarks.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I'm going to turn it over to Mark for some closing remarks.
Did you have some?
No, go ahead. You finish. Basically, I wanted to tell the rest of the story, which is where do we go from here? This is the mid-year budget. We are already preparing what we're going to propose to you in next year's budget, which you will be seeing at the end of May and beginning of June. And early indicators are that we could be facing, as of now, as much as a $10 million further reduction in revenues. So how are we going to propose to you to fill that? One is a continuation of the practices that Barbara just mentioned, some of the things, keeping positions vacant, moving to restricted positions. An example, we have a utilities division that has open positions because it's funded by fees, just to go over the sewer system. We could look at transferring employees to there. I think we have two or three positions there. Another is the department heads right now are working on cutting their operating budgets for next year. They've all each been given targets, and we'll be going over those. The general direction is the things we have to keep, obviously, we have to keep those that are nice to have but maybe not necessary right now, are deferrals or eliminations. And then looking at things that minimally impact the public as much as possible. The city's been very good at funding reserves. An example is we have a capital replacement reserve. If we have a piece of equipment that's on a 15-year replacement schedule, we fund it on a quicker schedule, say 10 years.
Well, that allows you then to not fund one year if you have to and still be able to replace the equipment during its useful life, or you can extend the useful life as well, too. And then just continuing to look at the scope of some of the projects we do and seeing if we can cut those down. We will get there with our presentation with you. There's always a silver lining. I think the silver lining in this economic downturn is as we weather it and when it turns around, the city's going to be in a very good position to have capacity to add targeted resources. We will be operating, we'll be providing services, but as revenues increase, we'll be able to add targeted resources as well, too. Barbara said the economic stimulus package, that's a huge deal. You'll be hearing about that shortly. That's going to also help us get to where we need to go, which is recovery. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, Barbara or I.
Just have one comment, and I think this is a good comparison we can make. If you look at our midyear budget and our budgeting through the years, I think our residents can look at how conservative we are with their money. And in an economic downturn, when we have less money coming in, we spend less. That doesn't sound like it's rocket science, but if we look at other layers of government for like the state of California or Washington, D.C., we see just the opposite. And it's thanks to this council, previous councils, and staff in particular in coming up with these budgets and making those difficult decisions. I hope our residents can improve their confidence and their trust in the city of Lancaster and how we manage their money.
You know, I want to make sure that everybody fully understands what both Councilman Ron Smith and Ed Celio stated earlier about the budget. It's a breath of fresh air coming from my background to come onto the council and take a look at a forecast out 10 years. And even though we're, you know, suffering the ills of the economic downturn, still being, to operate on a positive note, I know that as what was earlier spoken in regards to other cities, it's a comfortability to know that we can still offer strong services to the community in which we serve, and we haven't had to resort to layoffs. We still are operating with, within the budget. We've got reserves and definitely unlike the state where they can't even figure out how to come up with a six-month plan, let alone a 10-year plan. So again, I tip my hat to the council before us, the current council, and to the staff.
You know, it seems to me where the city is the strongest is we have a level of women in management, and in the past year, what I've noticed is that it is from that sector in particular that we're seeing the most innovative, creative, and fiscally responsible ideas. As much as we want to talk about this council and last council and all of that, what it really is is superb management. And Barbara, that, my hat's off to you, that what you've done with this budget, especially when we compare it to cities throughout the nation. What's happening to our city is something unique. With redevelopment, when, you know, this economic stimulus package we're going to talk about in a moment came from the women in the economic, in the redevelopment agency, the new ideas, in ways that were, it took an incredible amount of work that they did in a very short period of time. I just, for whatever it's worth, thought I would point that out, that what we, what we have here is something unique and that the people are given a lot of responsibility and some at a relatively young age and doing remarkable things with it. We also see the same thing in public safety. What Shelley's done is truly, you know, unique, and it's a joy and a privilege to be part of this, and I thought I'd let you know that. Thank you. Now, as long as we don't go bankrupt next year, everything will be fine.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for those comments.
Do we have to do anything?
Yeah, I'll move that we adopt the midyear budget.
Sure.
I'll second that.
It's unanimous. And now we can hear from the Economic Development Director, Vern Lawson, who will take credit for all of those young women in his office.
They're sitting right there, though, so they'll watch you.
Yeah, it's a little hard. Mayor and Council, this is the formal consideration of the economic stimulus package. We spent quite a bit of your time last meeting talking about the specifics and had a whole presentation and happy to go through any of that that you'd like to, but I'll be relatively brief tonight. One of our main goals was to kind of reconnect with our business community, and because of the publicity we've had from media and talks the mayor has given, we have gotten a great response from the business community. Towards that end, we actually had every single member of the Lancaster Auto Mall and City Hall on Monday morning, and they had some very specific opinions about how to get this stuff going, and the answer was, let's do it now. And we talked about being timely, and the auto dealers recognized that, you know, this needs to happen as quick as we can possibly do it. So we kind of had a game plan, but after listening to the auto dealers say that they'd like to start March 1st, as in this coming Sunday, we've shifted that a little bit, and I think we've come up with something that will allow that to happen. The plan is to develop the gift certificate program initially with a letter from the mayor to all the business license holders in the city. There's about 5,000, and that'll go out either the end of this week or the very first of next. And obviously, a gift certificate program isn't very good if you don't have any places where the gift certificates are honored. But because the auto dealers want to get started immediately, meaning March 1st, we're going to allow them to issue rain checks. So if you buy a new vehicle in the Lancaster Auto Mall beginning March 1st, you will become eligible for us to pick up your registration. The way it will work is that they'll receive a rain check, and then when the gift certificate program is in full bloom and when we have all of the merchants that have opted in, which will probably be between April 1st and April 15th, then you will come, bring it into the finance department, and you'll be issued these gift certificates. But so it's kind of a best-of-boss worlds, if you will. The auto dealers are all over this. Our staff is set and ready to roll, assuming your approval this evening, this week to go out and make presentations to the staffs at the auto centers. You know, I've been dealing with those auto dealers for 30 years, and it was great to see something that there was just hardly any dissent at all. Everybody knows and understands what's going on in this town, and they're delighted to go into it. We're also pleased, one of the staff got a call today from a gentleman from Arcadia, who heard some of the publicity, and he said, "I'm coming up to Lancaster to buy a car." And of course, that doesn't hurt our feelings at all. We're delighted to, you know, see people, people come in. The merchants will have an opportunity to participate. We already have an interest list that's formed. We've made some presentations, the Chamber of Commerce and the Board of Trade deal. Anybody that's interested, any merchants that are interested can contact our department at 7236128, and we'll put them on the interest list. And then once the letter's officially gone out from the mayor, you have to have a business license in order to participate, but then we'll create the opt-in program. So that's the kind of implementation of what we showed you. There was 21 different programs, and I'm happy to go into more detail on all of that. The total expenditure is $500,000. To refresh your memories, $200,000 for the registration program, $100,000 for the gift certificate program, where if you spend $300 in the city of Lancaster, you'll receive a gift certificate for $30. $100,000 to assist in filling the 1,250,000 square feet of vacant space in town with the brokers, 1% pop for a sale, 2% pop in the brokerage commission for a lease, and then finally $100,000 to help market this whole program. So that is our recommendation to you, and I'd be happy to answer any question. If there are tough questions, we actually have people that have all the information back there, and some of them are female.
Any questions?
No comments.
Any comments?
Yeah, you know, it's funny that the state of California just got done almost doubling the car registration, but the city of Lancaster is going to get rid of the car registration fee. I wonder which method is going to work to stimulate the economy. Great job. Maybe we can have Vern introduce his A-team back there.
Yes, why don't you do it?
Be happy to.
Dr. Steve Goke, who is non-female.
Heather Swan. We figured that out from a distance even, okay? I don't even need my glasses on.
Heather Swan, and Adrian Wilka, and Heather Kennedy, and all three are heavily involved in, personally own these various programs, and they're putting them together. And you have to realize that this isn't something that you could go to a textbook and pull out. And a lot of this is pure, original research, and, you know, we've worked hard. I'm so happy every time I'm in a meeting because they figured out an awful lot of these details because you obviously get a lot of detailed questions. But I'm sure it won't be perfect, but I also think that the auto dealers that we met with this week didn't care about perfection. They were very excited to have something to get people into the Lancaster Auto Mall.
You know, the press should recognize, and hopefully will make a point of this, that beginning March 1st, a car in Lancaster will be cheaper than anywhere else in the state. I mean, this is really a remarkable program they put together. The effective cost will be cheaper than anywhere else. So hopefully, it puts everybody back into business. The thing that came out of all of those meetings was a recognition that, you know, if you're a business in Lancaster, we're really partners with you, whether we want to be or don't want to be. The economic reality is, is that we both survive on the profits of those businesses, and so we're changing the way we deal with business. We're treating it much more of a partnership than it ever has been before. And we're going to make a lot of experiments along the way, and this is one of them that I, that I think is going to have a wonderful result. And thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Harris, one of the things that I kept thinking through the budget and also about the stimulus package was that this is the reason why this staff has won so many awards in the last year or so, and that they're really solutions-oriented, and they don't wait for things to fall apart. They just jump in there and do something about it. Really appreciate that. You guys did a great job.
Good. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve the appropriation and implementation of the Lancaster economic stimulus package.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Let's vote. Moving on to new business item number one, Public Works Director Randy Williams.
Every five years, the cities of California by law are required to conduct a specific engineering survey of speeds within their city limits in order for radar devices to be used to control speeds within those city boundaries. We have, we do not do every street in the city at the same time each year. We try to break them up and do a few now, a few later, and so forth. What we have before you this evening is a number of proposed changes to the speed limits on several street segments within the city of Lancaster. The staff report provides a great deal of detail to that. In summary, let me just say that what we are proposing as a result of this detailed engineering study, which includes speed measurements on all of these different segments of road, as well as analysis of local conditions of those roads, injury collisions, all of the different elements of a traffic safety program. But the summary is that there are proposed in this staff report this evening, six increases of about 5 miles per hour on segments of road within the city limits that have come about because the 85th percentile has demonstrated through that speed survey, an increase, a safe increase by the motorists using that road. At least they feel safe traveling at a higher speed. So we propose to increase by 5 miles per hour or at least to the 85th percentile for six. The better news is that there are nine such locations where because of the 85th percentile, we are actually seeing a reduction in the speed limit. And that's a trend in the right direction. In the past, it seemed like every time we brought proposals to you for speed adjustments, most of them were for increases as a result of the 85th percentile. So I think what that says to me is that motors in our city are starting to think a little more safely about how they drive in the city, and that's certainly a good thing for all of us. There are three additional locations within the city where speed limits are being decreased from where they presently stand, not based upon the 85th percentile in these cases, but rather on special circumstances. Let me give you a simple example. One of the locations is as you're traveling on Lancaster Boulevard west of 10th Street West, we drop, or we increase from what is a 35 miles per hour on the east side of 10th Street West to 45 miles per hour on the west side of that same intersection. We established, when we did our last survey about two years ago, that we were not going to have increases or decreases that were more than 5 mile-per-hour increments. So we're proposing that we lower the speed limit on the west side of 10th Street West to 40 miles per hour. So that's an example of those three. There are, in addition, 19 new street segments in the city that have not previously had posted speed limits on it. So that basically allows people to travel at what is the California Vehicle Code prima facie speed, depending upon the design of that particular road, of no less than 55 miles per hour, but perhaps as much as 65 miles per hour. What we're proposing is to establish speed limits on these 19 new segments that have been now populated around in amounts that would range from 35 miles per hour up to the 55 miles per hour. But this will make it enforceable, again, by radar on these particular street segments. Rather than try to go into more details unless the council would ask, would like to ask questions about it, let me just recommend to you that you adopt ordinance 919, and then we can begin the process of making these adjustments to the speed limits in the city and seek the sheriff's department's assistance in enforcing that.
Any questions, comments?
I'll move that we introduce ordinance number 919.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous. And we get to hear from Elizabeth Brubaker again. Oh, and then after this, we get to hear about cargo containers.
Mayor Harris and city council members, the proposed ordinance makes a technical change to section 8.28.200 of the Lancaster Municipal Code. It amends paragraph A of section 8.28.200 by amending the reference to California Government Code section 38775.5 to read California Government Code section 38773.5. Therefore, staff recommends the introduction of ordinance number 920, amending section 8.28.2000 of Title 8 to the Lancaster Municipal Code. This ordinance will take effect 30 days after its adoption.
Any speaker cards?
No speakers cards.
Any questions or comments?
I'll move that we introduce ordinance number 920.
Second that.
And it's unanimous. Mr. Bozegian, just as a point of, my button's coming loose, so we could get that fixed by next week. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item number three, the housing, I mean, the cargo containers. I'm dying to hear about this.
Oh, okay.
It's not housing unless you're really poor.
The proposed ordinance generally apply to the, applies to and regulates cargo container use in the city's residential, commercial, and industrial zones, and was initially heard by the Planning Commission on December 15, 2008. The Planning Commission requested staff revise the ordinance to allow the use of cargo containers in the RR1 and RR2.5 zones. The revised ordinance was heard at the January 20, 2009 Planning Commission meeting, where they approved the resolution recommending to the city council approval of the cargo container ordinance. The intent of the ordinance is to set requirements for the temporary use of such containers within the residential, commercial, and industrial zones, but to prevent the permanent, to prevent the permanent placement of these containers in any zone. In order to maintain the quality of Lancaster neighborhoods, protect property and property rights, and preserve the value of public and private investments, staff recommends the introduction of ordinance number 921, repealing and amending sections 17.04240, 7.08050, 17.12.050, 17.12.060, 17.16.050, 17.20180, and 17.20190 of Title 17 to the Lancaster Municipal Code. This ordinance will take effect 30 days after its adoption. It's a very good ordinance, and it took a lot of thought, and it's very fair to all, and it's a much-needed ordinance in this community.
Just, RR1, is that one-acre lots? Is that what that means?
Residential.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One acre, right? And what's going to be allowed there?
Well, they can have a cargo container. Well, they can have a cargo container, but it needs to be temporary, and they need to get a permit.
What's temporary mean?
Well, it depends upon the use. If they're doing construction of their home, then it's through the time that the building permit is in effect until they get a final from the city of Lancaster. Or they can go before, I believe, the planning director for other variances under director review, but it's temporary only. Not a year, not two years, not three years.
So what if they make it look like a shed?
Well, there's requirements in the Lancaster Municipal Code that pertain to sheds. A cargo container's not a shed.
Well, why is it a good ordinance?
Well, the manner in which people have cargo containers on their property, we run into those that have graffiti on them, we run into those that have been there long enough that people are living in them, dealing drugs out of them. And they're not, not everybody does things in the appropriate manner. And so, this ordinance is for that reason. That's what we deal with. And we get a lot of complaints on them.
What's a lot? And, you know, I'm being, I'm being a little facetious, but I don't mean to be.
When we started out, we were getting, like, two or three a month, but then when they found out we couldn't do anything about it, then they went and they went to the council with emails and letters, and so, they kind of tapered off for a while because they're not, they knew nothing could be done. But then, now it comes up again every two or three months when they start spraying the graffiti on them, and people start living in them.
Well, what if we just made it so you couldn't, they had to do something so you couldn't see it?
Well, it's hard not to see these cargo containers, they're enormous.
I'm sorry, what?
It's hard not to see them, they're enormous. They have generally two or three, they stack them, they don't put them in appropriate places, it's a visual blight. It really deteriorates in the neighborhoods.
Well, it just seems to me that if I have two and a half acres, and if I could make it so that it couldn't be seen from the street, why shouldn't I have it?
Well, if you can't see it from the street, we're not going to find it, nor are we going to get a complaint about it. But on two and a half acres, you have subdivisions out here that are two and a half acres with a house every two and a half acres, and a lot of the neighborhood, neighbors don't like that.
Mayor Paris, if I might, the Planning Commission suggested exempting, I think it was two and a half and one acres, and staff would concur with that exemption.
Yes, actually, the, the actions taken by the Planning Commission are to allow them permanently within the RR one and RR two point five zones, subject to a couple of requirements. Number one, you can't put them in the front yard, they have to be in the rear yard area. Number two, they have to be--
Pretty soon you're going to make me get rid of my couch from the front yard.
I'm not going to comment on that. The second thing that they placed as a requirement is at least fifty feet away from any property line. And they felt that those requirements in the rural areas would probably alleviate most of the real problems that you see with visual issues on these, on these types of containers. However, the commission concurred completely that placing these within smaller lot, urban-type areas was, was a problem.
We currently have, the way the ordinance is written now, has those changes that the Planning Commission had, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Good. Big ugly things in the front yard. Nope.
Well, I certainly get that they can be ugly, and people don't like to look at ugly things. But I also get that, you know, this is America, and if there's a way to do it that it doesn't create a nuisance to your neighbors, then I'm loath to do anything about it. I mean--
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
One of the main things with me is always going to be that we get the city safe, which we are well on the way, things are really looking up. And the other thing was that we get the city looking attractive. And I'll be glad to show you exactly where two of these little containers are on Lancaster Boulevard when we're done, and I think you would agree that there's enough property where they could put them in their backyards, but they don't. They're not going to until someone asks them to. So I personally--
See, and we also have a problem--
Are there any exceptions? Are there any exceptions?
Well, during construction, during moving, we have a problem with people leaving pods, those things in their driveway, for months and years. So I think that the ordinance is fair, in that you can use it for moving, use it for construction, use it for all sorts of things the containers are used for. Even on the rural, they can use them if they're in the required areas, and put things that they need to store that you utilize on rural property. I think it's very fair in the manner in which the ordinance is done, that it's just asking you to be respectful of your neighbor and your community.
Just asking.
Is there a methodology in the ordinance? Suppose you've got a storage container, and it's fifty feet away from your property line, and it's got graffiti on it, or it's painted some horrible shade of chartreuse or something that the neighbor objects to. Is there a methodology of cleaning up a current storage container, or something, just, I mean, I don't know how you legislate ugly, but do we have any methodology of dealing with an incredibly unattractive storage container that meets all the other requirements?
Well, for graffiti, we do, but not if they choose an ugly color.
Beauty's in the eye of the beholder.
And one of the issues we have with containers is, we do have some, and there are major complaints, they are property owners that do not live in the area, and they leave, they leave the container in the middle of their property, and we're constantly fighting and tracking down their owner for the graffiti, and people staying in them and stuff like that. But--
Well, now I know why Frank was trying to sell me his container so cheap.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other discussion? Let's vote.
I'll move that we adopt, introduce ordinance number nine two one.
I'll second that.
It's unanimous, reluctantly. Moving on to the council agenda. Mr. Buchanan, are you here?
You gotta wait, we're, gotta vote you in first. Mr. Buchanan is my recommendation for the, or I guess I'm nominating him for the Architectural and Design Commission. We previously changed the ordinance so we could allow him to be on the commission. Is there a motion?
I move we appoint Mr. Buchanan to the Architectural and Design Planning Commission.
Second that. Any discussion? Let's vote. You're in, it's unanimous. Mrs. Bryan, can you swear, man? Why don't you come on down, we'll swear again, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States-- and the Constitution of the State of California-- to the Constitution of the United States-- and to the Constitution of the State of California. I take this obligation freely-- without any mental reservation-- I will well and faithfully discharge-- the duty of discharge of that's to enter. Do you will sign right there?
So hopefully, we'll have some progress from the Architectural and Design Commission in the next couple of months.
Within thirty days.
Okay. Great, thank you. Thank you. City manager?
Yes, I have two things, sir. One, today we opened up, had an opening for the trail at Prime Desert Woodlands. We now have three miles of trails, and for the public that has not been out there, it's a fabulous facility in the, in the middle of an urban area. It's just a wonderful place to commune with nature, take a walk, you can get, in three miles, you can get a very nice exercise walk as well. And that was a good thing. The second thing is, I'd like to thank council on behalf of staff, because while sometimes it doesn't seem it, but for the employees and the morale of employees during an economic downturn, to get acknowledgement from council, from the executive management, from the public, means a lot. And towards that end, we are going to be launching a new program in about a week or two, which is called the Clear Choice Awards, and we are going to allow the public and our fellow employees to recognize other employees for the good works they do. We are blessed with a very good staff. You, we're talking somewhat facetiously about male versus female, but, you know, we have a good staff. We have a mix of young versus old, male, female, conservative, even liberal, and it takes all kinds to make a good staff. And if I may be, on behalf of my male colleagues, we too enjoy working with our female colleagues and try to provide support whenever we possibly can.
Thank you. City clerk.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time when you can address the council on anything that is not on the agenda. On the back table, you'll find speaker cards. If you'll please fill those out and print as clearly as possible, so that if the council or city staff needs to get in touch with you later, they will be able to read what's on the card. Additionally, individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you approach the podium, please notice there are three lights. The green light comes on when your time starts, the yellow light comes on when you have thirty seconds left, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We do ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the city council meeting, and we appreciate your cooperation with this. State law does prohibit the city council and the agency from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Well, we only have one speaker card. I guess that means I'm not being controversial enough. Mr. Pelka didn't even come. I will try to do better. Mr. Paul.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, good evening, city staff. It's just a pleasure to be here. I don't really have anything tonight, I just enjoy the process, and I think I would like to add that I feel fortunate to live in the city of Lancaster. Things are troubling all around us, but no matter how bad they get, I feel pretty confident that we're all going to stick together, and I'm really proud to live here. There's a lot to do, and I just wanted to tell you a quick funny story. The other night, I was sitting up late, I'm working on a book I'm writing, and my cats were having an unusual amount of activity, so I turned on the light, and there on the floor in the front room is a little toad. And I don't know how it got in the house, but somehow, opening the door to let the dogs in and out, it was on the floor. So I woke up my wife, and she captured the toad, and my boys loved it, and, well, it got under the couch, I couldn't reach it, you know, I had an excuse. But, so today, we're out, and it was another beautiful day, we planted some roses, and we came in the house, and I said to everybody, I said, "Make sure no toad sneak in when you close that door." And I said to my boy, who's always looking for something to do, I said, "Why don't you draw a picture of a toad, and draw those circles with the red line through it, and we'll have a no-toad zone?" And he says, "Hey, that's a good idea." And my six-year-old Clark, he said to me, "Dad, toads can't read." So that was just a fun moment. But thanks all for everything you're doing. I mean, I'm going home tonight and watch my recording of the president's speech and see where we're at, and what we're going to do, but I do know we have to pull together, and I'm very fortunate to live in a community where we're all going to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, now I know where all the dissent went, there, I'm watching the, right? That's right, okay. Okay, any council reports or comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have, Councilwoman Marcus and I are on the air quality management. Two of the, two of the things that I'd like to highlight is, one, is that for about, about two years now, we're trying to work on a better dust abatement plan. A number of years ago, I initiated it. We had some developers that actually walked away from their property, and a lot of people out here have asthma, or they have, you know, respiratory problems, and so, we're trying to work on taking care of that, so if they don't take care of what they're supposed to, the city and the AQMD can step in and take care of it. Also, we're moving forward on trying to get haunted, to bring the hydrogen cell pilot project up here to the Antelope Valley, and hopefully, real soon, I'll have some good news coming back to you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Paul gave me a good idea, when he said that, you know, the little no-toad zone, and with the, the red circle around it, and then the slash through it, how about a no-gang zone?
You know, in all seriousness, we're talking to the school districts, we're looking at, figuring out a way, is there some way that we can make it so if you're in a gang, you're not entitled to an education, you have to go to the Phoenix School. We're going to start figuring out ways to take away everything we can from anybody who's been identified as being in a gang. It's sort of like what we do to our kids, you know? If they're bad, we take everything away. My wife still does it, and they're in their twenties. So, but that's not as, that's a good idea, and we are actually moving in that direction, as far as directions that we're moving in. One of the things that I hope to have on the table in the next thirty days is a women's commission. See how I set everybody up for it and got everybody interested? Because quite frankly, I've been thinking a lot about how the political process in cities work, and what I've noticed is what happens is people stay uninvolved, then they become disgruntled about something, and then the, you know, those people that are capable of great toxicity, you know, and great complaining, all of a sudden rise to the surface. And I've always wondered, why is that? And I think the reason for it is, is that people who are creative and industrious really don't have opportunities to take part. And, and so, they're, they're not there to have transitions and to take care of problems and to grow the city. And I think that's especially true with women, because it's so hard for them to get funding when they run for office. The reality is, is most of the funds go to us guys, because it's, for whatever reason, it just seems to be a boys' club. And I want to fix that somehow, and I think the best way to do it is to develop a commission that is involved with bringing women and mothers into the, the process of doing the good stuff, so that they're there for when the bad times come too, and so that they meet the people that, that you raise the money from, and they have an involvement in the process, so that there's a smooth transition. I mean, quite honestly, there could be more women. You, you kind of broke the mold for a long time, you know, there, it was all, it was a boys' club for a long time, and it was a tough race for you. It took everything you had. So, you want something more on your plate to help me with, you know? Okay. Well, I would like some help on this, and, you know, the last thing, and the thing I should be doing is figuring out who's on the women's commission, right? So those of you who want to get involved, give me a call. And Mark's over there thinking, "Oh, no, this is staff time."
Mayor Paris, I will talk to a few ladies that I know that I think would be interested in that, though.
Okay. And also, most of what we're doing is affecting children, you know, and ultimately, I would like to have more input and more involvement. And I think that's about the only new thing I have going. Although I was shocked to hear today that E-Solar is now opening up in Palmdale. Did we know that? Ooh.
Are you talking about the press release on being sold?
On the--
I mean, on being, they had a company invest in E-Solar as well?
On the airport property? I had lunch with their vice mayor today, it's--
I don't believe that was E-Solar, the report I saw, I could be mistaken.
We should look into that.
Okay.
Now, how's this for transparency, huh? All right, that's it. We're going to adjourn the meeting in memory of Essie Mae Hearns, who has been, who was a stalwart of this community with all of her involvement in both the young people and in the churches, and has a following that we're all grieving the last few weeks, the last two weeks after her death. And so we're adjourning the meeting in her honor, and we're adjourned until March tenth, two thousand and nine, at five P.M. Thank you for coming.